Would everyone take their seat, please? And yes, I do not see an American flag. Would everyone take their seat, please? And yes, I do not see an American flag. Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the caucus meeting to order. This is Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the caucus meeting to order. This is Monday, Monday, September 26th. Would you please call the roll? Our clerk to counsel. September 26th. Would you please call the roll? Our clerk to counsel.
Councilmember Cunningham? Councilmember Cunningham?
Present and in person. Present and in person.
Councilmember Flueeling? Councilmember Flueeling?
Present. Present.
Councilmember Dawson? Councilmember Dawson? Absent. Councilmember McKellen? Absent. Councilmember McKellen?
Here. Here.
Councilmember Lawson? Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, in person. Mark Lawson, in person.
Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Howard?
Here. Here.
Councilmember Rodman? Councilmember Rodman?
Here. Here.
Councilmember Hervishon? Councilmember Hervishon?
Present. Present.
Councilmember Glover? Councilmember Glover?
Here. Here.
Vice Chair Somerville? Vice Chair Somerville?
Present. Present.
Chairman Passamet? Chairman Passamet?
Present. Present. Public notice, oh, wait a second. We don't have a flag. Would you all rise for the pledge Public notice, oh, wait a second. We don't have a flag. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance? of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. This is a hybrid meeting, and you will with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. This is a hybrid meeting, and you will see, if you look at the screen, two of the council members, Mr. Somerville and Mr. Flueeling, see, if you look at the screen, two of the council members, Mr. Somerville and Mr. Flueeling, are online. Everybody else is in the House, and one member is absent at this point in are online. Everybody else is in the House, and one member is absent at this point in time. I would ask a member of council to please offer a motion to approve the caucus time. I would ask a member of council to please offer a motion to approve the caucus agenda. agenda.
So move. So move.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion. Second, please. Mr. McKellen makes the motion. Second, please.
I'll second. I'll second.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Duly motioned and second. Any discussion? Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Duly motioned and second. Any discussion? I do not see any discussion. Without objection, and I see no objections, the agenda has been I do not see any discussion. Without objection, and I see no objections, the agenda has been approved. Our next item is our review of the county council meeting agenda. It is pretty approved. Our next item is our review of the county council meeting agenda. It is pretty straightforward. There are only minor items, three items on the consent agenda, all from straightforward. There are only minor items, three items on the consent agenda, all from the public facilities committee. Is there any discussion about any of the items on the public facilities committee. Is there any discussion about any of the items on the consent agenda? the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda will move forward. Is there any discussion about any Seeing none, the consent agenda will move forward. Is there any discussion about any items on the regular agenda, of which there are 27 of them, but they will go pretty quick? items on the regular agenda, of which there are 27 of them, but they will go pretty quick? Mr. Rodman? Mr. Rodman?
I just want to clarify one thing relative to the Myrtle Park money coming back. I just want to clarify one thing relative to the Myrtle Park money coming back.
Yes. Yes.
Do you understand correctly that we will be taking it up to move the money back, Do you understand correctly that we will be taking it up to move the money back, and then we're taking up where we want to put some of that debt? and then we're taking up where we want to put some of that debt?
Correct, and there will be- Correct, and there will be-
Can you turn your mic on? Can you turn your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, the question was, I understand, one of the resolutions, or one of the ordinances So, the question was, I understand, one of the resolutions, or one of the ordinances is to move the money back to the various- is to move the money back to the various-
Yes, and when we have the item on the agenda to do the amended budget, that is Yes, and when we have the item on the agenda to do the amended budget, that is where we will take that up. That discussion will take place prior to that, so there will where we will take that up. That discussion will take place prior to that, so there will be an amendment at that point in time. We will discuss it as item number 17. be an amendment at that point in time. We will discuss it as item number 17.
Yeah. Yeah.
I believe all of you have received Mr. Williams's analysis of what needs to be I believe all of you have received Mr. Williams's analysis of what needs to be done. We will discuss that and make that at that point in time. done. We will discuss that and make that at that point in time.
So, a question. If on the first item, we're just moving the money back, do we really So, a question. If on the first item, we're just moving the money back, do we really need an ordinance, or just have a resolution to actually move the money back to the- need an ordinance, or just have a resolution to actually move the money back to the-
That's- That's-
Pardon me? Pardon me?
Yeah, we've done it by ordinance in the past. Yeah, we've done it by ordinance in the past.
Yeah, we, okay. Yeah, we, okay.
And so, you, do you have the motion that was drafted for the budget amendment? And so, you, do you have the motion that was drafted for the budget amendment?
I don't. I don't.
If not, we'll get that for you before six o'clock. If not, we'll get that for you before six o'clock.
Yeah, I have it here, and we'll talk about that under item number 17. Yeah, I have it here, and we'll talk about that under item number 17.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yes. Mr. Dawson is now present, so we have the full complement of county council. Okay, yes. Mr. Dawson is now present, so we have the full complement of county council. Good evening, Mr. Dawson. Welcome. Good evening, Mr. Dawson. Welcome.
Good to be here. Good to be here.
Okay, any other items to discuss on the agenda itself? Okay, any other items to discuss on the agenda itself? Okay. This is why we did tonight's caucus meeting at 5:45. Is there any other item Okay. This is why we did tonight's caucus meeting at 5:45. Is there any other item to come before us in the caucus agenda? Yes, sir? to come before us in the caucus agenda? Yes, sir?
Not on the agenda, but in the discussion? Not on the agenda, but in the discussion?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Just one item. You know, I think about the fact, we have a large number of people Just one item. You know, I think about the fact, we have a large number of people that we appoint to agencies, boards, and commissions, and we don't really recognize that we appoint to agencies, boards, and commissions, and we don't really recognize them when they're coming on or going off. And I would think that we ought to go back them when they're coming on or going off. And I would think that we ought to go back and think about that in some form, because a lot of people put a lot of service in, and and think about that in some form, because a lot of people put a lot of service in, and we need to recognize that. You know, perhaps their picture and word about them when they're we need to recognize that. You know, perhaps their picture and word about them when they're coming on and going off. coming on and going off.
Okay, that's not a bad idea. Okay. Any other thing? Okay, that's not a bad idea. Okay. Any other thing? Seeing none, we will now adjourn the caucus meeting, and we will be back in nine minutes Seeing none, we will now adjourn the caucus meeting, and we will be back in nine minutes to actually start the council meeting. So, the caucus meeting is now adjourned. to actually start the council meeting. So, the caucus meeting is now adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the County Council Meeting of Monday, September 26th. Oh, sorry about that. I would like to call the County Council Meeting of Monday, September 26th, to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present in person.
Councilmember Flewelling?
Here.
Councilmember Dawson?
Here.
Councilmember McKellen?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson in person.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Rodman?
Here.
Councilmember Harvishon?
Present.
Councilmember Glover?
Here.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Present.
Chairman Passamet?
Here. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then please remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's invocation is a prayer of unity. Dear Lord, we invite you to guide us during this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Strengthen us as we make tough decisions. Let us be effective and decisive. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. May I have a member of council approve tonight's agenda? Mr. Rodman makes the motion. Mr. McKellen makes the second duly motion and second any discussion. I see no discussion. The agenda will be approved without any objections and I see no objections. We turn to item number five, our administrators' report. Mr. Greenway, good evening.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, good evening, Chairman, council, members of, who are in attendance with us this evening, those of us, those that are watching us on the county channel or online with us this evening. The one announcement I have is to let you all know that we are preparing for the potential for some hurricane effects or tropical storm effects. There's a state call being scheduled and held every day at 12 o'clock. I join that call, I listen to the call, and then I call Chief Bruce Klein and say, what did they say and what does all of that mean? Because they use so many acronyms and such big things, I don't really understand what's going on with that regard. But the one thing that I will tell everyone is that if there will be, if there is going to be an evacuation, that order will be made tomorrow. We do, I don't think that that will be the case, but that's what they said today, that the state will make that call tomorrow for those of us on, in the coastal counties. So, we'll see. And as soon as I know, I will let you all know, so monitor your emails tomorrow, your county emails, so that, that's the way I will get the word out to you. As any, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, as I typically do, I introduce employees. I have four to introduce tonight, because if you recall, when we were at Hilton Head, I did not do that, so I have an extra employee tonight to do that. And I'm gonna start off with elected officials' office. This is my first time introducing anyone from that office, and that's the auditor's office, so I'm gonna ask Amber Ferguson to come on up. And while she's coming up, I want to just thank Alvina Avery for the job that she has done in her management of that department on behalf of our auditor. It's been a, it's been a very smooth operation under her watch on a day-to-day basis, so she did a very good job. So, this is Amber Ferguson. She's the Assistant Deputy Auditor. She's been with us for six years. The auditor, the Deputy Auditor assists the auditor in all areas related to the operation in the auditor's office, including but not limited to operational staff supervision, planning and participation in training, legal research, and resolving problems and issues relating to daily issues that may arise. Amber is the true essence of leadership, which is servitude. Servitude is being a servant leader first, which is needed for an organization to run smoothly and effectively. Amber Ferguson focuses on the growth and well-being of her peers and employees under her supervision, which leads the others to serve as well. So, I see her a lot. I don't get to interact with her a lot, but I can tell her demeanor illustrates when she's walking the halls, and I do see her, her demeanor illustrates that last paragraph very, very well. So, thank you for your service to the elected official, and let's give her a round of applause, and I'm gonna let her.
Do we need a picture? They always like it for me to get a picture so we can, so we can post you all over the social platform.
So, our next person is Keja Smith with our Alcohol and Drug Abuse Division. I do not think she's here with us this evening. I think we do have a picture. She is a Human Services Counselor. She worked for eight years from 2004 to 2012, and then left Beaufort County, and she heard how good the current county administrator was and came back in July 2021. So...
That is a joke.
I do not know that that's the reason she came back. So, summary of job duties is Keja works with citizens convicted of driving or boating under the influence of alcohol or drugs. She is a licensed and nationally certified Masters Addiction Counselor. Something unique about her is that she has always wanted to learn to play the guitar and the piano, and she recently started to take guitar lessons. So, very good job for Keja. Thank you for your service to the county. Let's give her a round of applause as well. Our, our next person comes from us in our Business Services Department, and he brought a fan club with him, so come on up, Michael. Michael has been with us for only one year. I remember his first day on the job. He's in our, he's a business license specialist in our business license department. He assists customers with obtain, with obtaining and renewing their business license. He goes above and beyond for the customers and his coworkers. He is always patient and kind. He is very patient, very kind demeanor, does a great job for us, and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
We're gonna give you a round of applause, and I'll let you say a few words to them, and then I'm going to get a picture with you, okay?
I'll go with the, with the few words. Thank you for the recognition. I pride myself on customer service. Been doing it for 30 years. I hope to do it for the county for another 30. Thank you.
So, I promise when I introduce this next person, we did not order up what's gonna happen toward the end of the week here. This is Pamela Cobb. She works in our Public Works Department. She is our Disaster Recovery Manager, so she's been with us for 15 years. There is a long list of stuff here that I'm gonna have to read about all that she has accomplished, so you just bear with me a little bit. Pamela is the Disaster Recovery Manager for Beaufort County. Having been involved with planning and directing disaster operations and taking a lead role in recovery for multiple disasters, she learned what the true meaning of trial by fire means after handling Hurricane Matthew after only eight months in her current position as Recovery Manager. After identifying gaps and implementing solutions to the county's recovery plan, this plan has now become the national template of the Emergency Management Institute in Emmitsburg, Maryland. Emmitsburg, Maryland is where all, a lot of the folks go to receive training in various public safety and emergency response things, so it's, it's a federal program. Pamela has been awarded over $800,000 in federal grants and plays a significant role in Beaufort County, receiving over $28 million in reimbursement of federally, for federally declared events. As the accreditation manager, she secured accreditation for the Public Works Department, so that was mostly her work. She continues to oversee county departments for response operations during disaster events and preparation for recovery efforts and operations. Every year, Pamela facilitates training for the public works staff to ensure everyone is prepared. This is now an annual training that has expanded over the years and is also a three-day training event now that includes teaching staff how to properly fill out FEMA forms, a mock activation of the Public Works Coordination Center, and exercising and evacuation of county staff and resources out of the county. Prior to her current position, Pamela worked with the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office in the Emergency Management Division and played a pivotal role in the development and implementation of the current Beaufort County's social media preparedness app. Pamela is a native of Beaufort. She earned a Bachelor of Science degree in Public Safety Administration and obtained her Master of Science in Leadership with an emphasis in disaster preparedness and executive fire leadership. Pamela and her husband, Mark, on a firearm training business, Last Stand Defense in Walterboro, where Pamela is the lead instructor. That's good information. I'll know not to ever cross you. In, in her free time, she makes memory t-shirt quilts for people. So, let's give her a round of applause, and then I'll let you.
So, I can't believe it's been 15 years and seems like, well, it's just yesterday and sometimes feels like forever. But I just want to say too, we just, so we just did accreditation and we actually just went, quite a few of our folks just went to Charlotte for Public Works Expo, and I did not realize when we attended that this was not only national, this is internationally, conference that was attended, and so we, of course, went for accreditation, but we made it a goal that next year, everyone is gonna know Beaufort County, South Carolina, because we are gonna take over everything. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you very much. Next item is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing, recognizing the Penn Center. Mr. Glover, I understand you're going to do that proclamation?
Yes, and Mr. Wright is here, so would you come up, Mr. Wright? Let me first say, Mr. Chairman, oh, it's here. Mr. Wright, this is the proclamation from County Council to Penn Center, and it reads, whereas in 1862, the Penn Center was one of the first academic schools in the South established by two northern missionaries, Laura M. Towne and Ellen Murray, to provide a formal education for formerly enslaved Africans. And whereas for 160 years, Penn Center, Inc., located on St. Helena Island, has been at the epicentric, epicenter of African-American education, historic preservation, and social justice for tens of thousands of descendants of formerly enslaved Africans living in the sea island known as the Gullah People. And whereas the school closed in 1948, Penn Center became the first African-American site in South Carolina whose primary purpose was to safeguard the heritage of a Gullah community by preserving districts and landmarks that epitomized essential elements of its culture, history, to promote the use and conservation of such landmarks for education. And whereas in 1960s, in the 1960s, Penn Center, Inc., assured, assumed the mantle of social, social justice by ushering in the civil rights movement and serving as the only location in South Carolina where interracial groups such as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and the Social Christian Leadership Conference and the Peace Corps could have saved sanctuary in an era of mandated de jure segregation. And whereas in 1972, Penn Center, Inc., established a land use and environmental education program to assist Native Islanders with issues of land retention and stewardship through education and legal services. And whereas in 1974, Penn Center, Inc., received recognition for nominating its own campus of 17 historical structure and eight other sites on St. Helena Island as a, a National Historic Landmark District, one of only four in the state of South Carolina, and the only African-American historic district so named. And whereas in 1970, in 1994, Penn Center, Inc., opened the York W. Bailey Museum, the first African-American museum in Beaufort County, to interpret the history of Penn Center as well as that of the Gullah community on St. Helena Island. And whereas in 2008, Penn Center, Inc., demonstrated, demonstrated its responsiveness in meeting the ongoing and involving needs of the community, community by entering a unique public-private partnership with the Beaufort County Library and the Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services, Inc., to build a multimillion-dollar library and health center complex. And whereas in 19, in January 2017, Penn Center, Inc., the only historic site in Beaufort County, where dedicated, were dedicated the nation's, the nation's first reconstruction-era national monument by President Barack Obama. And whereas Penn Center, Inc., commemorates in 1960, at its 1960th anniversary in 2022, it has continued to endure both as a national monument promoting historical preservation as well as a catalyst for economic sustainability throughout the sea islands. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Beaufort County that this council hereby wishes to recognize Penn Center and its commem, as it commemorates its 160th anniversary dated on the 26th, today's date, 2022 of September, signed by our Chairman, Mr. Joseph Passamet.
First thing, I'm gonna say thank you very much, the council, Mr. Glover, and everybody present. We're very pleased to be a part of Penn Center. As was read in this proclamation, it is truly a jewel, and it's always a pleasure to, 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 to accept something of this nature. I want to say thank you to the council for all your support in the past and your continued support that you are gonna be doing for us in the future, and we're gonna try and continue to make you proud and make that a nice place for everybody, particularly with all our guests coming from all over this country. So, thank you again very much.
Okay, we're now at our first citizen comment section. I see that there are people that want to talk about the green space. You can either talk about it right now, but it is also on the agenda for a public hearing, at which time I will again ask if anybody in the audience wishes to make comments. You can make them then if you so desire. Chief Klein, you want to talk about private roads? So, let me have you come first and talk about private roads.
I guess because I'm the interpreter for the county administrator, I get preferential treatment here?
Sure.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of council for this opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to support anything we can do with private roads that will assist our emergency service response. We not only need to fix the private roads that hamper our, hamper and delay our response, we need to prevent and stop adding to this issue as much as we can. It continues today. Somebody buys a tract of land, they cut a private road in, they build their house. Couple of years from now, overgrown, ruts, issues, they can get their Honda Accord down there, but I can't get a fire truck, we can't get an ambulance, and then sometimes we can't get law enforcement there. This is a big issue. We understand all the different sides of this, but the fact is, we deal with this on a daily basis in Beaufort County, particularly my fire district that has many private roads, 144 square miles. We have many issues with it. So, anything county council can do to help with the private roads, your emergency services will greatly appreciate. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, those of you who listed yourself about talking about the green space, do you wish to address county council at this point or wait till we have the public hearing portion? It's up to you. Okay, we have several people on the list who have not identified what they would like to talk about, so Pat, will you come forward, please?
Mr. Chairman, honorable council members, I'm glad to be here. I'm Pat McGuffin. I'm here with my wife Sheila, and we are new homeowners in Beaufort County since February, but unfortunately, it looks like we're being kicked out by a simple misapplication of county code to a 70-year-old covenant. Here are the facts. I bought my home in Shellpoint for retirement in a couple of years. There's no HOA. Neither of the realtors told me there were any covenants. My closing attorney didn't. My title insurance didn't, but after the purchase, a neighbor brought to my attention a 1958 covenant, and I've included it in your packs. I have been working for a couple of months with a nice Miss Lisa Anderson in your zoning department and have my short-term rental application all done, signed off by the fire marshal. Zoning told me to hire an attorney to verify there was no covenant restrictions. I did, and the attorneys gave me a go-ahead, and then I talked to two more attorneys, and they were all shocked by the current position the county has taken. Then early this month, county zoning said, stop. I am not allowed to have a short-term rental in Shellpoint because no commercial activity is allowed according to their interpretation of the covenant, but the covenant does not say commercial use. It only refers to residential use, which is what I'm using it for, unlike other businesses operating in their Shellpoint homes. In Shellpoint, you have long-term rentals. You have people operating businesses from their home. You have businesses licenses listed to homes, and when I'm not there, I'm using my home for residential purposes. Marine families use my home for coming to graduation. Selective enforcement. I feel singled out. This covenant also doesn't allow for chickens, but there's tons of chickens and roosters all throughout Shellpoint. I love that. So, please, we want to stay and retire here, support the local economy, but unless you intervene quickly and review how you are labeling short-term rentals in Shellpoint, I'll have to leave, and you will have selectively enforced a wrong application of this 1958 covenant against me and not the other non-compliant homeowners in the area. Please look at my packet. Please put a stay on my October 15th deadline from code enforcement until you get a better legal opinion on this, especially related to selective enforcement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Wendy?
Good evening. My name is Wendy Zara. I live in Port Royal, and I'm really excited to be here tonight because you are doing first reading of the Regional Housing Trust, and we have been waiting and working on that for 20 years. I think Mr. Somerville would remember, because he was chairman at the time. We've had affordable housing consortiums. We had an opportunity to join the Low Country Housing Trust, which council decided not to do. So, here we are finally starting officially a regional housing trust that is gonna bring huge economic benefit to both counties, Jasper and Beaufort. So, I'm thanking you advanced for doing first reading, second reading, and third reading and voting yes, and also that you're gonna vote on the two resolutions to authorize Eric to sign the contract with Community Works as well as for the intergovernmental agreements. So, thank you very much, and this is really, really a big day for Beaufort County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Allen?
Good evening. Well, as you know, I'm Ed Allen. First, I want to thank Pam for the work that she has done in the, in the past. Thank, hopefully this year, she won't be calling me, but she will be advising me. I'll be like the rest of the citizens trying to find our way out. But I'm here this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of council, to address the needs of maintaining some of the county roads. Realize that some time ago, you edited into this, you looked at this, and I think this is something you need to readdress. Looking at some of the people that we have in the county, both north and south of the broad, that have private roads going into their residence. Anytime that there is an emergency, whether it be EMS that's trying to get in, or fire department, as Chief Klein has, has referenced, or law enforcement, they pose a problem in getting into some of these roads. Not looking at all of them, but some of them that need... that need to be addressed so that we can get in and render aid to our citizens. We have had past cases of it where we couldn't be accessible, when I was EMS director, ran into that problem, as coroner ran into that, that problem, and it currently still exists. As we look back through some of the past history and speaking with the fire departments or EMS and law enforcement, I'm quite certain that they can identify where those conditions occur, and I thank you for your consideration and look forward to working with you on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council, my name is Angela Childers, and I'm the Director of Beaufort Housing Authority. I wanted to thank the county for its work on the Regional Housing Trust Fund. This is definitely a step in the right direction towards providing affordable housing for our community. I look af- I look forward to the approval of the ordinance establishing the trust fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council, and I am Kathy McClellan, and in the interest of full disclosure, I am a county council candidate. The reason I want to speak on item twenty-five now is because I had some questions, I went over the MOU and the supporting documents, and my concern is, I know we're going to do the end-to-end independent analysis, but I kind of see the bridge project and the, you know, the Moss Creek to Squire Pope corridor as inextricably linked, so my concern is, you're gonna do the report, when we get the results of the report, you're gonna move forward with the projects in, the bridge project, as I understand it, and so when you get the results of the report, my concern is, what happens if there are significant concerns that indicate that the path, the trajectory you are taking with the bridge happens to be something that is gonna have a significant, a really significant and detrimental impact on Hilton Head, and so if maybe when you talk about this issue, when you, when this comes up on the agenda, you can talk about, you know, what will be the options once this, once the results of the study come out, what, what do you think would be the options we'd have to make some corrections and to move forward and to, and to, you know, minimize the impact on the Hilton Head neighborhoods and that corridor? So, that's the reason I want to speak on it now, so if you could help me understand that and address that during your conversation, that would be very helpful, so thank you.
And Linda.
Good evening, my name is Linda M. Lloyd Hills, and I have a few questions to ask you all. I want to know, how long do you have to own property before it becomes under the grandfather law, if Beaufort County ever thought about having one? And I have one that been in my family since eighteen sixty, and the same family continued to live on that property. I have a concern about Oyster Factory, Sands Point Road, I've been there for sixty-seven years on Sands Point Road. I used to call Sunset Bluff the back road, go to Mr. Wapple's stove back there, and I want to see the feasible study that you all use to want to approve what you all present to us on our last meeting. And my last one is, I question you all about the private road, and I noticed that you all have it down number fourteen, but you all don't have an explanation. You explained to me what it was, but like I state, I have a private road. Every time you mention the word "private," you pertain to me. So, the next time you all present this, give us a good definition of what you all call a private road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will conclude our citizen comments. As I said, there are items on the agenda that are public hearing items, you will get a chance to speak to the issues when we come to those. We are at the liaison and committee reports, are there any reports from any chair of any committee? Mr. Rodman and then...
Mr. Chairman, relative to the consent agenda, three items, one's called Broad River Fishing Pier. Oh, yes, sorry. Three items on the consent agenda, first is the Broad River Fishing Pier, sometime back, we looked at a variety of different options, and over time, that's been narrowed down to one, and this came out of public facilities in order to proceed with that design, it would then come back to us again after its bid for a construction contract, and those funds will come out of visitor, tourist hospitality funds. The second one is an on-call construction management services, and essentially, we're following a pattern that they use at SCDOT, where they will have on hand in two or three different categories like design and construction, a stable of pre-selected contractors so they can call on them as needed based on the needs of a particular project and the availability of the consultants, and thirdly, it's the appointment of a Mr. Arthur Hanman to the Low Country Regional Transportation Authority. That's those are the three items. Mr. Chairman, speak.
Mr. Chairman, I had two liaisons.
Ms. Howard.
The TCL met last week, and their enrollment is slightly up, which is good news from two years ago, they compare it to two years ago, and up quite a bit from last year. Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board is having their retreat on Thursday, it starts at seven thirty, and it is in their boardroom and will be over about noon time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will now move to the public hearings and action items. First item is the approval of the consent agenda, may I have a motion and second?
So, move, sir. Second.
Mr. McKellen made the motion, and Mr. Rodman made the second for the approval of the consent agenda. Any questions? The consent agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number ten is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance establishing the Beaufort County Green Space Program ordinance and setting forth the methods by which county council intends to procure open lands and green space for the preservation subject to a referendum within Beaufort County pursuant to Section four dash ten, dash ten ten, et sec of the Code of Laws of South Carolina nineteen seventy-six as amended. May I have a motion to hold the public hearing?
So, move.
Mr. McKellen made the motion?
Second.
No, I know, it's Mr. Hervishon, I think I did that correctly, we can now hold the public hearing. So, members of the public who want to speak about the green space program, and I see there are two, Mr. Warko and Mr. McClure, would you please come forward? And then county council will have a discussion. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ray Warko, and I am a retired CPA living on Hilton Head Island, and I've lived there for the last thirty-four years. I am also a member of the Greater Island Council of Hilton Head Island and Bluffton, and that council does support this referendum by their vote. I support it, I support this referendum because of three different significant reasons to me. One, forty percent of the collections will come from non-residents of Beaufort County. To me, that's a significant number. Two, that the sales tax does not apply to fuel, groceries, or medical prescriptions. And three, this is going to be enacted for only a period of two years, or the collection of one hundred million dollars, whichever comes first. So, I thank you for having the courage to be the first county in South Carolina to bring this referendum forward, so let's get this referendum passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hey, good evening, council, my name's Grant McClure, I am the South Coast Project Manager with the Coastal Conservation League, and perhaps I should have given these comments during the, the general public comments, but I'm gonna start with the two seventy-eight project, item twenty-five, and then segue into green space, if you'll grant me the latitude. I'm here to recommend that the, I guess, constructing a new, a new bridge to Hilton Head Island is a once-in-a-lifetime project which will have lasting impacts. The bridge project's too important not to get right, and the town of Hilton Head will absorb the traffic if impact issue, if traffic issues are not properly addressed. The completion of a truly independent end-to-end analysis is necessary to arrive at the right traffic solution and the best ultimate project outcome. Additionally, obtaining these results before moving forward with the project will foster trust among your constituents. Further, the completion of this additional traffic study is needed to comply with NEPA. The NEPA process is about informed decision-making and takes a holistic view at all aspects of the project. Moving forward, moving the project forward in the NEPA process towards a finding of known significant impact, or FONZI, while an independent review is still underway, undermines the integrity of this federal requirement and opens the county up to a potential legal violation. Beaufort County and the town of Hilton Head have nearly arrived at a unified vision for the two seventy-eight project, however, further cooperation is needed between the two parties to get this project right and ensure, ensure compliance with NEPA. The Coastal Conservation League encourages you to incorporate the modifications requested by the town of Hilton Head into the MOA before you this evening. All right, and this is part two of the double feature. I'm just here to, to say that I support Beaufort County in their, their pursuits of the green space referendum. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to secure funding for acquisition of green spaces. With unprecedented levels of growth and development in the region, this green space program will provide places to recreate, improve water quality and air quality, safeguard the agricultural and defense industries, and protect our natural resources for our children and grandchildren. We recommend the council, we commend the council's diligent consideration of the ordinance before you this evening, and we look forward to seeing the program come to life pending voter approval. Thanks for your time.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak about the green space?
Good evening, council, Kate Schaefer with the Open Land Trust, thank you for the opportunity to speak to y'all tonight, and the opportunity to comment on the proposed Green Space Penny Ordinance. As you know, for the past eleven years, the Open Land Trust has served as a staff contractor to the Rural and Critical Program, and we are proud of that program and proud of the leadership that Beaufort County has played in land protection. At the Open Land Trust, we are also enthusiastic supporters of the Green Space Penny and believe this is an exciting opportunity to protect land at a new scale. The Rural and Critical Program has been successful, but with this new and increased funding, we have the opportunity to build on that success and achieve even more public benefits, including growth management, protection of water quality, disaster preparedness, more farms and better food, and jobs afforded by healthy natural resources, including military, tourism, farming, and forestry and agriculture across our region. We believe voters should have high confidence in the Green Space Penny because of our track record of success in Beaufort County and statewide. As you know, growing from a recommendation in nineteen ninety-nine in the Comprehensive Plan, the Rural and Critical Program was born in two thousand and two and has been approved five times by voters with over seventy percent support at the polls. Voters have expressed again and again an urgency to protect what we love, the land around our rivers, our farms, our military buffers, our special parks, and water access points, and that cry has never been louder or more urgent. And some examples of that success, which I hope you can visualize in your mind, or certainly on your drive from the library tonight, include Lemon Island, a huge growth management opportunity protected first with pre-referendum dollars, three hundred and eighty acres protecting uplands immediately adjacent to the marshes of the Port Royal Sound, Bendon, which prevented five hundred docks on a small stretch of the Pocatello River and would have, would have driven residential development in the middle of a rural area, costing taxpayer money to send police cars and service vehicles in that direction, over fifteen hundred acres in the Okati River watershed, a watershed we hold dear and whose upland protection helps improve its water quality, thousands of acres of farmland, including active farms right here on St. Helena, thousands of acres around MCAS Beaufort, partnerships with Department of Natural Resources, our towns and cities, and numerous historic sites, including Fort Fremont, Fort Frederick, and the Battle of Port Royal. In the night, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Comprehensive Plan, conservation easements came up and again and again as a preferred form of land protection, which offer the potential for landowners to continue to own their land and remove commercial and industrial uses, reduce residential development exponentially, and continue to add to the public good. All of this helps create a livable place, and you know more, just as well as we do, that growth pressures are calling us to continue that work now because land protection is an essential complement to the work that our economic development, affordable housing, and land planners are doing across our region to create livable places. The history of land protection is multifaceted and no project is the same, so this ordinance allows for creativity, enables partnership and innovation, and also includes some important specifics that should give taxpayers and conservationists trust in the process. The whereas clauses and purpose language are strong and specific, and the stakeholder group with knowledge in land preservation can set us on the right path. Jurisdictional letters of support, matching funds that are encouraged, these are all benefits to the land protection partnership that exist. Thank you for the opportunity. I could go on and on, y'all are wise to limit me for three minutes, but I really thank you for your work and your staff's work on this ordinance, and the strategic land protection, not haphazard land protection that it enables moving forward because we believe it will be a benefit to our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion. Comments from members of county council? Mr. McKellen, you made the motion, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I support, sorry, I support this, have supported it from the beginning. I agree with everything Kate said, she makes a lot of sense, she always does. I believe we have a great many professionals here in the county that can help us identify the lands that we should be protecting to, to limit growth and perhaps buy down density. I think that one percent for two years, as Ray Warko pointed out, will be contributed at about a forty percent rate by people who visit this community, and we'll benefit from collecting those dollars as we apply those funds to the protection of land and buying down density so that we can perhaps have professionally managed growth in this area. That will benefit everyone. So, I will, I will support this through to the end, and I encourage everyone else on council to do the same thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hervishon, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like Councilman McKellen, I've supported this, I will continue to support this. I echo everything that Kate and Mr. Warko have said, and not only that, but I do, over the long term, view this as a tax reduction policy as opposed to a tax increase, so I enthusiastically support this.
Mr. Dawson.
Yes, I, I want to make it clear that I support land conservation and preservation of our forestry, so waterways, and land that is sensitive to growth and development. However, I have one concern that I need some clarification on, and that is, if I, if I understood the presentation that was given by Senator Davis, initially when we started this discussion, the question was asked, these funds that are going to be raised, which is one million dollars over two-year term, these funds will not only be spent in Beaufort County, but it can be spent in neighboring counties as well. So, is that, am I clear, and that observation, is that a fact? Would someone verify that for me?
I'll let Mr. Greenway weigh in on that.
So, what you, what you are adopting this evening is the method by which, if the referendum is successful and we do start collecting the penny on this, it is how the money will be spent, and the method ordinance does include a provision for the money to be spent outside of Beaufort County, but it also includes a provision that gives you all the latitude to require matching funds from those outside jurisdictions before you all voted to purchase a tract of land. The reason why we did that is because there might be properties that are adjacent to our waterways, particularly the Port Royal Sound Foundation in Jasper County, that might come under development threat, that is already beginning to occur along one seventy in Jasper County, where there recently was some property for annexation and regalia. was some property for annexation and regland. That's an old plantation that would be way outside of the city limits of origin. These funds could be used in those particular cases to purchase such parcels or buy down the development density of those parcels in order to protect higher water quality in Beaufort County. So that is the intent, the purpose. So the short answer to your question is yes, these funds could be spent in other surrounding counties where development might have a negative impact on Beaufort County.
If, if by chance the neighboring counties choose not to support the matching funds, then do we still go ahead and spend our funds?
You will, you'll make that determination, council made that determination on a case-by-case basis as to whether or not, how important it is for matching funds to, to be used in those situations.
Thank you. Mr. Glover, any comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I didn't have any comments.
Okay, just going around the table, making sure everybody has a chance to participate.
Yeah, I do support conservation efforts and stuff, thanks.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes, I'm going to support it, and what I like the most is that we're sending this back to the, the public to make that decision. It's not us 10 or 11 up here making that decision for everybody else, so, and I've always been for that, anytime we can have the public vote. So if you are for this, you need to go tell your neighbors, you need to get people out, you need to educate them, because again, it's, it's your neighbors and other people in this community and this county that are going to be the ones that vote on that referendum. So again, I'm in support of it, but I'm only one vote out of the 182,000 people in Beaufort County.
Ms. Howard?
I have no comments, thank you.
Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that we have worked hard on, on county council. We've gone back and forth on the amount of money, the time, the full penny, half penny, and we came up with this was the best idea for two years for 100 million. This gives us the opportunity to be the first county to try a new program out, to preserve as much land as possible. Two years to build the trust of the community, to see if this program is successful, two years to see if we want to keep this penny, a full penny or half penny when we come later on for, to talk about transportation and roads here in Beaufort County. The biggest thing for me isn't even necessarily buying land, it's buying down the density. I think that is a big thing. When we can turn a neighborhood that's zoned for 500 homes down to 300, that makes a huge difference on our school districts, our fire departments, our police, and as well as our roads, which we've been chasing the tail for over 20 years now trying to keep up with unsuccessfully. So I have continued to support this, as Mr. Lawson said. If it's something you do support and you're educated on, please educate your neighbors, that, that's the biggest way to get the word out. 40% is going to be paid by tourism. It does not go against gas, it does not go against food or medical, which is also huge for us, but when tourist season comes around, that, that is a big portion of it. And if you look at the timing of the way this goes, usually our taxes are about 40% done for sales for tourism, but it could even be higher on this one based on when it starts and takes effect in May, because it's going to hit two portions of tourist season and miss our residents for those first four to five months of next year, which is a big push for us as well, to hit tourist season twice and give our taxpayers a break for a quarter of the year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm good to go with this, and also several members of the Hilton Head Town Council spoke favorably about this at their last meeting, and they were in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Flueheling?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support putting this on the ballot. I think it's a good idea to give our residents an opportunity to have their voices heard on this matter. However, I, you know, I do have some reservations about it. This ordinance is not perfect, but it's a good start, and I think that future councils will have an opportunity to fine tune it as their experience with it grows. For instance, I would like more structural involvement by the Rural and Critical Lands Board. I'd like, I'd like to have an opportunity for them to weigh in on each purchase or recommend purchases to the committee. And also, that committee is oddly lacking any elected representation of the municipalities. That might be problematic for us, and, and we might want to revisit that, maybe have some kind of a revolving seat on the board for a municipality to be represented once or twice a year on decisions that are being made. But other than that, I support this, sir, and I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm an enthusiastic supporter of this. When we decided on the last Rural and Critical Lands referendum, I tried to increase the amount from 25 to 50 million for the simple reason that there are opportunities out there that we're missing. This will give us a chance to get, to reach out for some of those opportunities. I know this is based on a brand-new state statute that is not perfect, far from perfect, that has some ambiguities in it that we'll have to, excuse me, that we'll have to iron out. Senator Davis has gotten a couple of attorney general opinions, which have been helpful, but we're still going to have to do some clarification as we go along, but I'm undeterred by that. I think this is a great opportunity, and I 100% support it. Thank you.
Just one clarification for council. We do not decide the makeup of the committee. That is prescribed by the state law on how the committee is made up. Of course, anyone can serve. If the council elects to appoint one of the four folks, they have to serve from the north, the south, the east, and the west. If they want to make those municipal elected officials, you all would certainly have the right to do so, but the makeup of that committee is prescribed by the state statute on allowing us to do this.
Okay, I have the final comment. Oh.
Yeah, may I make a comment?
Yes.
At order. Beaufort County is the first county to do this, and, and given that, I would be receptive to changes that you all think would be necessary in the statute to make it more workable, to make it more representative. There's one thing about doing something in theory, but then when you actually put it into practice, you uncover certain things. I don't anticipate there would be any resistance whatsoever to making modifications to that, to that statute, so I'd be interested in, in what you're all's collective experience is with this and what might make you more comfortable with it in the future, because I think that will help other counties as well. So if you have a mind to make recommendations to me, I'd be happy to move through some legislation to tweak it so that it addresses some of the things that Councilman Flueheling and Councilman Glover and Councilman Dawson have indicated. So I want this thing to be workable.
Thank you. Actually, just...
Before you make your last comment, let me make sure that in the ordinance is clear. Anytime I reference in the ordinance the green plan, that's talking about Beaufort County Green Plan, right? You lump it in with the comprehensive plan and the green plan, but specifically it talks about the green plan. That is talking about the same thing, right?
No, the comp plan is talking about the comprehensive plan that's adopted. Whenever we talk about, and I hope it says the green print map, which is, which is the map that we use to identify the prioritization of which lands are suitable for us to preserve through this program. So they're two separate things. The green print map is a part of the comprehensive plan to a degree, but the green print map will also be priority consideration as well when we bring projects before council.
That's what, make sure that the same, same map?
It is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Davis actually stole some of my thunder in that this is a state law that was presented to the 46 counties. The lead county is going to be Beaufort County because we have taken such an interest in the preservation of rural and critical lands. We have a history, we have backup to show that we know what we're doing. We're going to set the tone and tenor for the rest of the state in modeling this law going forward. I am an advocate for this. By our passage of this, we are advocating and educating the public as to the need for the public to weigh in, be sure that they accept the terms and conditions to move this to a successful program. That being said, we will, do we need a roll call, or can this be done on second reading as a unanimous consent? I see no objection that way, and we will consider this passed unanimously. Item number 11 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance, amending ordinance 99/10, to further accept details of the conduct of municipal elections from the city of Beaufort by the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Beaufort County. May I have such a motion, please?
A public hearing?
Yes.
Motion's public hearing.
Mr. McKellen?
I'll make the second.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. We will now have any member of the public who wishes to weigh in on this item, please Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Appreciate your support out of committee and on first reading of this. Just appreciate second and third reading. It's a bit timely with the general election coming up on November 8th, but I'm here if any of you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Mr. McKellen, again, do you wish to make any comments?
No.
Ms. Howard?
Nothing.
Is there any member of council who wishes to make a comment about this? Seeing none, this will also be done as a unanimous consent to move this on to the next reading.
Can I make a motion for that?
It was duly motioned and seconded, and it will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Okay, item number 12 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, known as the CDC. Section 4 dot 1 dot 330, ecotourism to clarify guiding principles for ecotourism development and establish base site area calculations for ecotourism development. Ms. Howard makes the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this particular item? No comments? Okay, we'll close the public hearing part. Is there any member of council who wishes to make any comments about this? Ms. Howard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, yes, Mr. Chairman, this will clarify some things that needed to be better defined, and it came through Natural Resource Committee, and we think this will, will do what we want it to do. Thank you.
Okay, any other member of council wish to make a comment? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 13 is a public hearing and approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute a lease agreement between Beaufort County, the town of Hilton Head, and historic Mitchellville Freedom Park for the property known as the Beach City Road Parcels.
So moved, sir.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment at this time regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any member of council wish to make a comment about this? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 14 is a second reading of an ordinance to provide maintenance work on private roads. May I have such a motion, please?
So moved, sir.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion, second.
I'll second for discussion.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Glover?
Please, yes, sir.
Okay, duly motioned and seconded. Mr. McKellen, comments from you first?
Yeah, there, there was some discussion at the last meeting on Hilton Head with regard to the legality of this, and then we had a very moving presentation by the county administrator who told us about some of the difficulty with regard to reaching the residences on private roads, particularly the availability of emergency equipment, ambulances, fire trucks, police, sheriff's department vehicles, and how important it was to consider all of the people who live there on those private roads, who needed to have emergency access for the residences at, on the side of at the end of those private roads. So I think that what we're doing here tonight is considering maintaining those roads for the ability of emergency vehicles to get there, not maintaining the private roads for residential or commercial traffic, so to speak, but to ensure that the roads are passable so that our emergency vehicles can reach the homes that are on the side or at the end of private roads. So I'll support this tonight. I know there are some restrictions on it. Mr. Kevin, he has been very clear to us about that, but I believe that this is a worthwhile project, and I don't believe that it will be something that causes us to spend inordinate amounts of money to ensure emergency vehicle access. Thank you.
Mr. Glover, do you wish to make any comments?
I think I'm going to stand on Mr. McKellen's comments. He did it perfectly, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Dawson?
Yeah, I, I support the, the resolution that we're considering dealing with the private roads. I'm, I'm sorry, the ordinance that we're dealing with, the private roads. For many years, I've had difficulty in rural parts of my district, which most of the district is rural, but the, the extreme rural parts of the district where we have emergency situations and the emergency responders respond, but they can't get to the residents to take care of the situation. And so I'm, I'm going to support this because I feel strongly that we don't need to maintain these private roads on a regular basis, but when, when a, when a situation arises where the road, the access becomes inaccessible to emergency vehicles, then we need to do something to assist in that effort.
Any other comments? Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a thorny issue.
A thorny issue, and I support it in concept. However, it is a violation of the state constitution, and I can't bring myself to vote for anything that is a violation of the state constitution. I'm also informed that if we, as council members, got sued, we would not have legal coverage. It would be up to us individually to do it since we're in violation of the state. I believe there's probably a solution, and I tend to hope that we will look for another solution, but I do have to vote against it since it is a violation of the state constitution.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Lawson, and then Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, and I expressed my, my feelings at the last meeting. The ordinance is missing things such as how much we spend if we go out to do that. It misses how much we're going to spend on a yearly basis, is going back to Mr. Hervishon, is where, where's the money coming from for this? It also doesn't limit how many times we'd go do this. So, you know, even if we made those changes, I still would have a difficult time. I mean, basically, we're telling people, don't maintain your roads, and we're going to come fix them in an emergency. We get people that come to us all the time with their private roads and want us to take them over, and I'll start to maintain them. The biggest reason that I'm opposed to this is that we should never, ever spend public money on, on private roads, private anything. So again, this is something that, you know, when you look at it, if there's people out there that need assistance, this doesn't even find a way for us to get paid back. There are lots of people that have a private road, and they need to get there, but they got lots of money in their bank account, and they own an acre or they own 100 acres, and in this ordinance, we're doing it for free. We are not at all trying to get our money back. So this ordinance needs to be massaged more, and even then, I still have a tough time because, you know, if someone needs assistance, there should be a way they can apply for it, and we should have a grant system then to go out and take care of people that can't afford to have their road fixed, not just anyone that shows up and says, hey, we can't get back there, let's go spend 1,000, 10,000, 100,000 dollars. Again, there's no limit in our, in our ordinance that limits that for this. So again, I'm not going to support this ordinance.
Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I stand along lines with Mark on that. The biggest issue I'm going to run into on it is going to be we're using private funds for private roads. It takes a lot for someone to stand up here and say, I can take somebody else's tax dollars to use it on somebody's private property. to use it on somebody's private property. I understand the logistics behind it. I understand the emotions that come with the video or the presentation from the other day. I know how all that operates, but at the same time, emotions and point of views don't change the law, and legally, we can't use private funds, or, I'm sorry, public funds on private roads. And that's gonna be the biggest issue. There is no cap on this. There's no ability for us to say how much we're gonna spend. We have no idea. We have no idea when we're gonna complete these. We have no sense of direction of where we're gonna start. They say it's one time, but what's to say after us maintaining a road in five years, a storm comes through, and that road's messed up, and we come back and we say, okay, there's times two? Or if we maintain this road, and somehow it still isn't up to par that they said, and we get hit with a lawsuit, we're the ones responsible for it. I understand the need in the county. I know there's a lot of roads. I think there's a lot of different ways for us to tap into that, whether it is a grant program or a payback program, whatever that might be, or case-by-case basis, but I can't stand by and allow public money used on private roads just to set us up into a legal issue down the road.
Anyone else? Mr. Hervishon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the risk of sounding redundant, I agree with my three colleagues who just spoke. I can't see voting for anything that's against the South Carolina Constitution. That doesn't seem to make sense to me, number one. But number two, I don't know where you would draw the line as far as spending public money on private property. And I don't know where you would draw the line between residential and commercial either. I think that, I know off the top of my head, I can make a case for a private road that leads to a commercial building in my district. So where do you draw the line exactly? That, along with where do you find the funds, and how much we're gonna spend, and budget, and that sort of thing, it's just too sticky for me. Although I am very sympathetic to the need, I just can't bring myself to vote for it. Thank you.
Ms. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at section G, I think this covers the discretion of the fire chief or the EMS director or their designee when there's a public health or medical emergency exists. I grew up on a dirt road, and we did end up paying to have it made. It was a county dirt road that was hard, very hard to maintain by the county, and we ended up turning it into a private road. This was in another state, another county, but the people on that road had the means to do it. We have people in Beaufort County who do not have the means to do that and turn it into a private road that they can maintain themselves, and I think G answers those questions, and I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify a couple things. The ordinance is pretty clear, that this is a one-time situation, that the inspection will be carried out by the emergency management personnel to evaluate the conditions of the road and to make a recommendation to me as to the conditions. So it's not like people can just call us up and say, hey, I want my road graded. There's a process, and you all will, if this goes forward, will have to just trust that I or the county administrator in place at the time will manage that effectively. The other thing is, is, you know, I'm glad you all are convicted over spending public money on private property all of a sudden. I'll point back to many years, a few years ago, where you all, some of you all in council, were happy to support an agreement whereby the county taxpayers paid a lot of money to Robert Graves to do infrastructure improvements on his private development properties. So I'll just leave it at that, and, you know, as I've stated before, this might be an issue. Whenever there's statutes in question, I consider the intent of the statute and what the purpose of the statute was. The purpose of that statute is to keep, you know, the egregious activities that many of you have heard about down through the years of a public works director sending the public works crew out to grade or pave or his private road, or a road that benefited him and things like that. That's the purpose of the state law. If a court does at some point in time, comes down on me for, or you all, for spending money to try to protect public safety for people that we've allowed this situation to occur, to build homes, mini homes, on these private road standards, then we will gladly stop that. There would be no damages in that situation that I could think of, other than people saying that, you know, they lost some tax money. So, anyway, that's just my plea. If you all do not want to do this, then that's great. I was asked by Councilmember Glover, Councilmember Dawson, to bring a proposal forward. We've brought something consistent with other jurisdictions. If this makes second reading tonight, we'll have the public works director at third reading at the public hearing to give you the details on those jurisdictions and what their policies do. But let's just be careful about saying that we don't spend public money on private property because there are several economic development projects, the Robert Graves situation, and I don't have a problem with what we did with the Pepper Hall situation, but public money gets spent on private property all across the state of South Carolina every day of every year, and it has historically been that way.
Mr. Somerville?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. One is, we have a large inventory of what we call legacy roads, which we maintain, which we don't own, and I don't know what the number is. I'm gonna guess the last time I looked at it was in the fifties or sixties. It's a lot of roads. The thing that I like about this ordinance is that it puts a lot of discretion in front of the county administrator and the fire chief to make certain that this is not being abused. There's no question, if we're not careful, we could have something that's easily abused. But I think the fail safes that are written into this ordinance, I think it was well-crafted, are good enough so that we're not gonna have people who are gonna fail to maintain their private road and then just come crying to the county all the time to get it fixed, because I think the answer to that's gonna be no. So, anyway, I'm comfortable that the safeguards are there and that the people in charge of those safeguards are responsible enough and capable enough to make sure we don't get, take advantage of, so I'm gonna support it.
Okay, any final comments before we call the roll?
Chairman, I do.
Yes.
You know, I'm a native of South Carolina, and if it wasn't for civil disobedience, a lot of things would still be going on right now when it comes to the state law. I just wanna say that. It's always good to do the right thing, and I think this statute here does the right thing. Thank you.
My comments are this, before we call the roll, when I did the invocation, it was specifically set up for just this topic because it's a tough decision we have to make. It is something that affects all of us. No one got upset. Everybody had their chance to voice their opinion. Administration has heard us loud and clear. Maybe there is some additional tweaking we can do with this before we act on it as the final. So I am going to support us moving forward, although I have some reservations. When you're spending money on private roads, that is problematic. Everything that was said was accurate. My concern is this: when there is an emergency, that means there is a critical need to do something. If you go out and say, if an emergency would happen on this road, we couldn't get there, let's fix it now, that emergency may not happen for five, 10 years, and would we have to do it again? So that's the only downside that I have to this. So, moving on, we will call the roll. Mr. McCollum made the motion, and then Mr. Glover, and then the rest.
Can I ask for one more question for clarification? Just because of what's coming up this week. So say a property has been deemed complete right now, a road, and is safe, and a storm comes through, and then that entire street, all those streets are no longer safe, does that mean we can go back to this project again to fix those roads? If it's never, if they've never used their time on that road, but it was maintained, whether they have the funds or not, and the road is destroyed, are you responsible to go in and fix that road based on this ordinance?
I think in the past, we have waived a lot of things when it comes to hurricane recovery and response regards to private property, right down to picking up debris on private property, so.
I have a final question. Are people on these private roads squatters or taxpayers?
They're taxpayers, and they are either on family compound property or heirs' property. So historically, when there's heirs' property, you don't know who actually has ownership of the property, so several dwellings could be located on this property, and, you know, in fairness to those folks, you know, I think this is a safe, great alternative for us to consider this.
Okay.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, just, I just ask council as a whole, let us bear in mind and keep in mind that we're trying to address emergency situations and not every, not every day, run-of-the-mill request for fixing a private road. Emergency, emergency.
Okay.
Councilmember McEllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Fluehelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
No.
Councilmember Hervishon?
No.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
I'm going to say yes, and by my count, there are-
Seven, four.
Four no's, so it's seven, four, and it passes. Next one is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all documents necessary for the sale of county-owned real properties identified as fourteen oh seven King Street and six hundred Wilmington Street, city of Beaufort. A motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the motion.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to-
You're gonna do that amendment when we do item number eighteen?
Eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Got you.
Okay? What Mr. Glover is talking about is executing of these, and there will be a monetary amount involved, and how we're going to use that will be part of item number eighteen. Any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fluehelling?
Thank you. I intend to vote no on this, Mr. Chairman. I don't think that this is a wise use of public money. There you go.
Okay. Is there any other comments? There is one objection, and I will, yes, two, two objections. Do I need to call the roll because of the objections, or is everybody else satisfied, and this will be nine, two, to move on? Seeing no other objections, the motion is successful, nine yes, two no. And the two no's are Mr. Hervishon and Mr. Fluehelling. Next is item number sixteen, first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Article Eight, Division Two, Section Two dash six one nine, to require a property identification number on quitclaim deeds.
So moved.
Mr. McCollum makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Fluehelling, is your hand up for this one, too?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman. I intend to vote no on this. I made my objections pretty clear, I thought, in committee. I think that this is probably not in keeping with the spirit of state law, certainly not in the spirit of any other kind of law. Can you hear me all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Loud and clear.
All right, thank you. And so I intend to vote no.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, this will be approved with one objection from Mr. Fluehelling. Okay? So this carries as ten yes, one no from Mr. Fluehelling. Item number seventeen is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Beaufort County ordinance twenty twenty-two slash thirty-three for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three Beaufort County budget to provide for distributing funds from Myrtle Park Phase Two Fund and other matters related thereto. May I have such a motion? Mr. Rodman makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Now, in your packet was an analysis of the funds and a recommendation from the administration as to how the distribution of those funds should be done, and that will be part of item number eighteen as well. Is there any discussion? Mr. Rodman?
Give some background as I under, some background as I understand it. At Finance Committee, we approved six hundred thousand of this money to move to economic development. In subsequent discussions, some of the people would like to understand a little bit more about how this money would be used by, within the economic development range, whether it's going to the so-called job and work site funds, or whether it's gonna go to the second spec building. So it seems to me where we are is to have a motion to move the ninety-two thousand, which is undisputed, back to the job and work site fund. That will serve as a first ordinance, first reading to get us started. I think we can come back and understand at the committee level what the use of the balance of the money would be, and then that could either proceed separately or catch up with this one at second and third reading. So that would, so, can I make a motion now?
Yes.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we amend the proposed budget ordinance to include the appropriation of ninety-two thousand and ninety-four dollars to the job and work site fund.
Second?
Second.
Duly motioned and seconded? Discussion?
Question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
At the Finance Committee-
Yes.
-meeting, I thought Larry motioned for six hundred thousand dollars to be brought forth.
No, it was Mr. Rodman who motioned. He actually had two motions. One was to reimburse council for all of the monies due from the sale of the property, and the second one was then to take money from the general fund to the job fund.
Where does the six hundred thousand come in?
Well, that was his motion. An analysis-
Wasn't that passed?
It passed, it, there was a recommendation out of committee, but we're gonna clear this up, and I wanna make sure-
Okay.
-that we're not dealing with two items at the same time on the agenda.
Right.
Appreciate that.
So it seems like we've jumped-
Yes.
-from item seventeen into a budget amendment, which is coming up next-
Next.
-when the amendment should be made, so.
Yep. Okay, so everybody should understand exactly what we're talking about.
No, I'm not clear, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then-
I need some clarification.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Who do you want to clarify? Do you want me to do that?
You can do it.
Okay. The property in question was the seven point seven acres that was sold back in two thousand fourteen for one million one hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. There were site development costs for the life of the project, which were four hundred and ten thousand and twenty-one dollars. There were professional services for forty-six thousand and eighteen dollars, and two loan interest payments of eighty thousand dollars each, for a total of one million seven hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars. The economic development contributions came from various credits totaling one million two hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So therefore, the amount not funded using the development credits for the total cost to develop the project- turned out to be five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Now, then there was Beaufort County contributions totaling eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. There was other funding totaling thirty-one thousand, and then we had the sale of the Myrtle Park property for five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So, the analysis said we needed to be paid back from the sale of that property to the debt service fund, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which was the two interest payments that were paid out of the debt service account, should not have been done. Second, the general fund for two sales of properties that were used for this project totaled six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. So the eight twenty-eight, the thirty-one, and the five ninety-nine equaled the nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We're now backing out one hundred and sixty-six, sixty-eight, five seventy-six, leaves us with ninety-two thousand and ninety-four dollars. That can go to the site job fund. And when we get to the item number eighteen, which is the budget itself, we will make the motion to put that ninety-two thousand dollars in the budget for the site development.
In addition, in addition to other monies, so that, so that the total amount will be six hundred thousand dollars that'll be allocated to economic development, but that item comes next, not, not with this. So it would be appropriate for the current motion to be withdrawn about the ninety-two thousand if that suits the council.
Yes. Will you withdraw the second?
Sure.
Okay. All right, everybody is clear now on the first reading? I've made it clear as mud?
Yes, you did. That's all right.
Okay. Well, in the spirit of camaraderie, as I said, we're just going to move on with this.
If I could, real quick, just say, for transparency's sake, it is better that we get paid back all of our money that we spent on this project.
Correct.
And if we decide then to give more money to them, it is a separate issue that we can then give them money. So again, to make things as transparent for the public as possible, it is, the county can take back the money that they spent, and then if we decide as a council to get more money, we can do that in the next...
You're, you're getting paid back for some of the money that you've spent, so, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make this comment. The Economic Development Board came before us, and we asked them to do something with Myrtle Park. It was sitting on the books. It was a bad deal going awry.
Yeah, I agree.
And they came and they made an offer, and this was the best deal. And what we did at that time, if I remember, it was that we promised them that they would have the six hundred dollars, six hundred thousand from the sale of Myrtle Park so that they can continue economic development in the county. They're doing a great job, and we want, I want to support them in that effort. So however we do it, Mr. Chairman, as long as it gets done.
That's not, that's not in dispute at all.
Thank you, sir.
All we're trying to do is to account for the finances, how they were done, and what we need to do to move on.
This is present staff's attempt to clean up what has historically been happening with this issue and these accounts so that we can get it straight for our purposes, and then on the next motion, there will be an amendment offered to do exactly what you're talking about.
Which is the full motion, which you will read.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. All right. Is there any, Mr. Fluehelling?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we had a successful motion to amend the next item on the agenda, and then a successful reading on that item as amended. I'd feel a lot more comfortable, you know, at that point than doing it the way we're doing it right now, and I say that because we had a clear motion coming out of committee, and now it's being changed. I would rather see something else get changed.
No, no, it's not being changed, Brian. What is happening is we're giving an accounting of all the money is that's going to go back to county council. It's going to go back, it's going to transfer from the debt service fund for the low, loan interest paid by the debt service fund. It's going to transfer the general fund for those two sales of properties, and it's going to transfer to the site and job fund. The next one is going to put the rest of the money necessary to bring it back up to the total amount of six hundred thousand dollars.
And I would, so if I might, might help Councilmember Fluehelling because he's in, he understands parliamentary procedures better than I do, but keep in mind, if you do this and take a vote on this, and then the next vote doesn't go the way you planned, then someone that voted with the prevailing side can make a motion to reconsider item seventeen.
Yeah, that's so messy, though, but I agree, Eric. All right, I'll go ahead and withdraw my objection, Chairman.
Mr. Hervishan?
Thank you. Given how convoluted this situation is, I personally would feel a lot better if we heard from Mr. O'Toole that he is comfortable with this approach and what we're doing, if that's possible.
It's not procedural, but it's what we need to do, but where's Mr. O'Toole? Do you have a problem with what we're doing, Mr. O'Toole?
No, I'm grateful. I'm, 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 I'm full of gratitude, and I am grateful, but I will say, I did sit through your Finance Committee meeting, you know, and there was one motion, and it was for six hundred thousand, and it was a ten-o vote. You, the chairman asked, are there any disputes? So this is complex, it's confusing to me, but if the net outcome is six hundred thousand, we can continue to do our good work. Thank you.
Yes, okay, and it will be, as you will hear in the next motion. All right. Is there anyone objects to this? Mr. Mayor, your comment?
I have a liberty of public comment. Just a second. I appreciate that. Looks like you're going to figure out a way to skin the cat and fund the, fund the site fund, and so I, I sincerely appreciate that. You know, at the last meeting, I stood before you and talked about the great success of John O'Toole, and I think sometimes it's lost on the decades of failures that we had in this county in economic development, and the millions of dollars that we spent on economic development unsuccessful. And because we work together, and I'm looking at Councilman Dawson and Councilwoman Howard, Councilwoman Glover, Mr. Somerville, Mr. Rodman, many members of this body worked diligently with municipalities, with the educational institutions, to put together the Economic Development Corporation that we have today. The county's put in almost five million dollars into that effort. The city's put in almost three million dollars into that effort, and I think we ought all be very proud that we've accomplished over a quarter of a billion dollars in capital investment. That's expanded tax base that benefits Beaufort County. But most importantly, it's created over thirteen hundred new jobs at an average wage of over forty-seven thousand dollars a year, creating opportunity for our citizens so that they can live and thrive in this county, and a different type of job sector is critically important. And for the first time in Beaufort County's history, something we all ought to be very proud of, we have organizational capacity in an entity that is achieving that goal, and they're doing it as a two-man shop, John O'Toole and Charlie Stone. So I don't know what this is all about. I know Ms. Ward and Mr. Hayes and Mr. Williams. I don't know if it's a personality issue or what's going on, but this is the third meeting that Mr. O'Toole has attended over this issue that I thought was settled back in February of twenty-twenty. And so I just ask, I just ask that we not let politics or personalities get in the way of an effort that will be life-changing and generational-changing, not only for the sustainability of the tax base, but for the citizens across all of Beaufort County. Thank you.
Let me stop you right there to say, this is not about economic development. What this is, accounting. We are accounting for the money that was spent incorrectly. We're correcting that amount of money. Any other further comments?
I have one, because I don't, you guys know I don't like for people to come after my staff, and I've, I've about had it with that. The folks that brought this issue up were doing what they needed to do to make sure that you all understood the history on this and the background as to what happened here. You all may have already known, have known that, and may, might have been okay with it. I didn't know it because I wasn't involved in this project, except as the planning director. I think as a planning director, it's a bad deal for the county. I don't think it's going to, I don't think we're going to get out of this development what you all think we're going to get. As county administrator, I have a duty, if somebody brings a concern to me, to allow them to present that data to you all. It is not about Mr. O'Toole. It is not about the job that Economic Development Corporation is doing. It is about making sure you all understood the background and making sure we get the record straight moving forward so that we can continue to carry out the activities for economic development in a correct way that the county council desires. So thank you all.
Let me reiterate for the public, this has nothing to do with economic development. This has everything to do with the accounting of the monies that were spent for this project. We're going back in time and correcting some errors in the way it was funded. Okay. Do I need to do a roll call, or can I just declare that this will be approved without objection?
And we're basically coming back to the motion that I made at Finance, which was to return the monies to where they needed to go.
Yes, and you have the amendment that's going to be done in the next one, okay? You will read the whole amendment. All right. This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Okay. Now, we are at the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Beaufort County Ordinance twenty-twenty-two slash thirty-three for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three Beaufort County budget to provide for additional appropriations to pay for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two carryovers, use of fund balance for property acquisition and transportation projects, and the use of current year funds for capital projects and equipment purchase to fees, refund, general obligation bonds, and other matters thereto. May I have such a motion, please? Mr. Glover makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. McKellen makes the second. There are going to be three proposed amendments to this first reading. I will go first to Mr. McKellen for his amended motion.
Yeah, I have an amendment to this motion, I have an amendment to this, to this motion dealing with the appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Public Service District Number One. I move that we amend the proposed budget ordinance, amendment to include appropriation of one million dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Hilton Head Public Service District Number One, which contains twenty-five thousand residents in both unincorporated Beaufort County and the municipality of Hilton Head. This money will be used for the following projects: a new water booster station at the PSD's Legomutton site to help ensure that the PSD's water can be delivered to its customers efficiently, effectively, and consistently. And number two, to purchase an emergency generator at the PSD's reverse osmosis drinking water treatment facility to help ensure resilience and delivery of quality drinking water during natural disasters.
I'll second that motion.
Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Hervishan?
I would like to recuse myself from this matter.
Yes, you had indicated that.
I have a question, sir.
Mr. Fluehelling?
Thanks. Is this the same motion that failed in committee?
Did not fail.
No, it did not fail in committee.
Okay. Did not fail in committee?
It did not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Lawson?
The referee's... You know, this, this is just one of many PSDs in our county, and, but so far, no one else has come forward. I, I have some thoughts that, you know, we might have other ones that come forward for this. And if that happens, well, we're not going to have enough money for, to spread it evenly. So on, on my side, we're, we're giving the money to the, the smartest and the fastest group that came to us asking for money from us. However, on the flip side, I am, I will support it, and it's because that, that area pays a higher proportion of taxes than most of the rest of the county, and yet they usually get the least amount of services from us. So I think it's something that's needed. For the PSD, I think it's something that is smart to look forward to, for hurricanes and, and for things such as that, for the generator. So again, with, with, with some reservation, I will go ahead and support the measure.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Glover?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the, there are a lot of other needs in particular rural areas for infrastructure, and like Mr. Lawson just said, in the rural area, they are not as sophisticated as the Hilton Head districts by having staff members to get things moving forward, but I can assure you that there will be other requests, particularly from rural areas, for this infrastructure funds. And so with that in mind, I will, I'm going to support this motion, simply because, well, you're first on the table.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Mr. Fluehelling, you're going to vote no?
Oh, no. No, no, I'll vote for it.
Okay, all right, then this will be carried unanimously with one recusal, so it will pass ten, zero. Okay, so that amendment passes, will be added to the original amendment. Amendment number two, Mr. Glover, would you please read the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the proposed budget of ordinance, amendment to include appropriations of the one million, fifty-five thousand dollars we are contracted to receive from the sale of the King Street property and the sale of the Wilmington, Wilmington Street property, both of which are located in the City of Beaufort, to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used for capital improvement projects for South Side Park in the City of Beaufort and other county parks.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Discussion? Any discussion?
Just a question for clarification. Is it just the park listed, or all parks in Beaufort County eligible for that?
It's, it's really the parks, probably centered mostly in the City of Beaufort.
So, kind, we have several projects identified, and we, I can get Chuck Atkinson to give you the projects for next reading, but I've been working closely with city manager of City Beaufort, Bill Prokop, and he and I have developed a plan as they use the proceeds from the sale of the parking lot to us near the courthouse to develop their portion of South Side Park. They're going to also amend their contract or have, do a change order with Wooden Partners that's doing that design work to add a connection to the county portion of South Side Park where we can build additional pickleball courts, improve a bathroom, and a full court basketball court on our side that will connect the two together. So that's why the motion is worded this way. We want to go ahead and get the allocation started so that when the property is sold, we can just put those monies into an account for Mr. Atkinson to do those, to do those funds. And I think since he's here, he probably already has the answer, so I'll turn it over to him, so, and I'll, I'll be quiet.
Oh, thank you, Eric. That was great. So I don't know how far in the weeds you want me to go. In addition to what Eric has listed, we have a lighting project at Horse and Tate, South Side pickleball courts, bathroom upgrades, Lynn Brown Center repairs, Scott Center Field and lighting repairs, Booker T. Washington repairs, and Lynn Brown, I have two pages listed out of individual repairs. How far in the weeds do you want me to go?
No, we don't need to go in the weeds. We know that we're going to spend quality money on projects.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Are you okay? Are you okay?
Yeah, so my question just really lies with, I don't want us to get to the manner of, we sold property in Beaufort, so we're going to spend all that money in Beaufort because I don't want it to go vice versa, where we sell millions of dollars for the property in Bluffton or Hilton Head and we say it all goes just that one place. I just wanted to make sure that this is open for an opportunity for across the county because that can get into a sticky mess if we sell something along the lines of Buckingham Landing for five or six million, and that comes out and says, well, all the money for the property sold in Beaufort went to just Beaufort, so is all that money going to go to Bluffton? And, and I'm in Bluffton, and I just know that that's not going to go well as, as it shouldn't. So, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't something that is a process we're going to follow for the future on whatever property we sell or for the location, then it has to go to those designated areas, or if this was just where we saw the immediate need was at this moment.
So, I'd be happy to address that. Parks and Rec, me as a staff member, I look at Parks and Rec countywide. I also look at pools of money, par grants, A&amp;H tax funds, impact fees. We have been given money out of Avalorum Taxes to make repairs. What we have in Parks and Rec is a lot of new facilities south of the Broad and a lot of older facilities north of the Broad. If you look right now Phase Two at Buckwalter, we're putting $9 million in that park alone. We're also looking at some other projects that we're going to bring up probably next month, south of the Broad, but when you look at the need north of the Broad, we are way in the hole. So, I don't think this is a case of this money is specifically north of the Broad because it's sold. That's where the huge need is, and this is a portion, not a full amount of what we need. So.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment.
Hundred percent on board, Mr. Glover. I support you on that.
Thank you, sir. I've, Mr., Mr., Mr. Bluffton got more money than they know what to do with right now. So, thank you, sir.
All right. We have duly motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Okay, before we move to the third one, I need a motion to extend the meeting, please.
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion to extend a second. Mr. Hervishan, motioned and seconded. Is there anyone objecting to having to extend the meeting? Seeing none, the meeting will be extended. The final amendment, Mr. Rodman, you will make the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I need a clarification from you.
Yes.
We've talked about the 600.
Yes, you're going to read it exactly the way it is.
And we've got 92,000 going back otherwise.
Yeah.
Is it additional 600 or 600 net of the 92?
Net of the 92. That's how it spells it out.
Okay, I move that we amend the proposed budget ordinance amendment to include the appropriation of 92, 094 to the Job and Work Site Fund. These funds consist of 92 from the Myrtle Park Fund and 507, 906 from the General Fund.
Yeah, so the 92 was 600,000.
Right.
Consisting of the 92 and the rest of the money.
Right, okay.
Okay?
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, let me try. I, I think, I think what I was saying is that move to amend that we allocate 517,906 from the General Fund to, to the Job and Work Site Fund, period. I think that does it. No, I think it's 917,906 because we previously decided we would allocate 92,000 back to the Job and Work Source Fund.
No, no, no.
Okay, well, somebody straighten me out, I don't know. Go back to my motion from Finance was for 600,000.
Right. The motion should be that Mr. Rodman moves that we amend the proposed budget ordinance amendment to include the appropriation of $600,000 to the Job and Work Site Fund. These funds to consist of 92,094 dollars from the Myrtle Park Fund and 507,906 dollars from the General Fund. The 600,000 is to be returned to the Job and Work Site Fund upon the sale of any facility project where the 600,000 dollars has been used and will serve as a revolving amount for previously committed and future economic development projects. Now, we need a second.
That was what I said.
Yes. Okay. So, Mr. Rodman made that motion, and Mr. Glover made the second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Okay, now, we're at the main motion, which now includes three amended amounts. Do we, we need to read the three amendment amounts, or is everybody comfortable?
Comfortable.
I think we're all good?
We're good.
Yep.
Okay. Duly motioned and seconded. This will be approved at first reading without objection, and I see no objections. Hooray. We got through that one. Item Number 19 is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to enter into an exchange, purchase, and/or sale agreement with the Town of Hilton Head Island for the sale and purchase of real property consisting of 68 Helmsman Way, 43 Jenkins Road, 70 Bagall Road, and 152 William Hilton Parkway. A motion, please. Mr. McKellen makes the motion. Mr. Lawson makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 20, first reading of an ordinance to establish a regional housing trust fund and other matters related thereto. May I have a motion, please?
Would you like to make a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. Mr. Dawson makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment that this has been worked on for many, many years by a lot of people, and it, it's about time and efforts made by many volunteers to educate the public and to educate council, and it's just as important as preserving open space in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just want to make a comment that I, I, I like that the definition is placed in this ordinance dealing with the homeless housing. I think that's something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 21, approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement with Community Works to provide administration and management support for a designated regional housing trust fund. Motion. Mr. Dawson makes the motion. Mr. McKellen makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? See no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Item 22, resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Jasper County, Town of Hilton Head Island, Town of Bluffton, Town of Port Royal, City of Hardyville, City of Beaufort, and the Town of Yemecy to jointly create, fund, and operate a regional housing trust fund. Mr. McKellen makes the motion. Mr. Dawson makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Discussion. See no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. 23 is approval of a resolution to accept FAA AIP Grant 50 for Hilton Head Island Airport Terminal Construction Project. Motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion. Mr. McKellen makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion, this will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. 24 is approval of a resolution deferring work on U.S. Highway 21 known as Sea Island Parkway from the intersection of South Carolin, South Carolina Highway 802 known as Sam's Point Road, Lady Island Drive, and Highway 21 to the Woods Memorial Bridge. Motion and second, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion, second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Rodman.
Just, just briefly, the background. We had money approved in the 2018 referendum for Ladies Island, the so-called Ladies Island program. We had money approved in the 18 referendum for about 30 million for Ladies Island. It's been somewhat on hold, combination of financing and trying to sort out what we were going to do with the access to the high school. And relative to the high school, there was a, a long line of discussion, there were studies that were made, there was a series of alternatives that came for, forward. There was a lot of opposition to each of the individual alternatives. There was no particular strong support or no support that I could see really for any of the alternatives, so the logical thing to do was to basically do nothing. And I should also point out, we didn't have money for any of the alternatives. So, essentially, we're going back to, let's get on with the, the plan with one exception, which is this resolution is that the, the portion that runs from the bridge to Sam's Point Road should be held in abeyance until there's further work done on what should happen there, and I think the city of Beaufort and the county will be working on some kind of a charrette to work that forward. So, that's the background, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 25, approval of a memorandum of agreement with the Town of Hilton Head on the U.S. 278 Corridor Project. Mr. McKellen makes the motion. Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Sorry? Yes, we're going to have discussion. Senator Davis, do you wish to weigh in on this?
Sure.
To begin with?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it on? Okay, thank you. I think I have the agreement that you all are taking up right now. Do I have it here? Okay. I guess I'll note a few things just for, for informational purposes. This agreement, if passed tonight, will then go back to the Town of Hilton Head, and then the Town of Hilton Head will take it up and, and either concur and pass it or further amend it and send it back. I, I don't know what they'll do with it. I was at the meeting last week when the Town of Hilton Head discussed the MOU that you had forwarded over, and I think that Mr. Rodman and Mr. McKellen were at that meeting. And I want to point out a couple of areas in which this MOA differs from the conversation at that town council meeting, just so that this body is aware of what remaining issues there are that the town will have to take up and do something about either way. One would be in regard to the selection process of this independent consultant. There was discussion at the Town of Hilton Head that it should be three and three, and this agreement is reflective of that. There are ten, three members of Beaufort County, three members of the Town of Hilton Head who will, in collaboration with each other, select the independent consultant, which is a defined term. There was some discussion at the town council meeting of having a citizens group also having the ability to participate in and weigh in on that selection process. So, I just point that out as a matter of something that the town will have to take up and decide, you know, how they feel about that, what they want to do. The second thing I would note is there was some discussion in regard to the scope of work, and I, I believe that what the town had discussed was having the scope of work that was approved by the Town of Hilton Head a few weeks ago and sent to Beaufort County attached as an exhibit. One of the components of that scope of work that was in what the Town of Hilton Head had proposed was a litany of things, one of which was an assessment of other alternatives as opposed to the preferred alternative identified by the DOT. There was some discussion about whether or not that could be done, how long it, it would take, whether that was going to jeopardize the NEPA process, whether it was going to jeopardize the request for a record of decision from the Corps, whether it was going to result in some sort of violation of the IGA that the county entered into with, with the CIB. So, I took it upon myself to, to go to Columbia to, to meet with Secretary Hall. I view my role in this matter not as a principle, but to give you guys the best information that I can so that you can act on that information. I, I explained to Secretary Hall that there was, there were, there was some feeling on town council and among members of the Hilton Head community that additional due diligence needed to be done in regard to this project, and that's what gave rise to the scope of work. I asked her what would be the consequences or what would be the impact of the scope of work as proposed by the Town of Hilton Head on the processes that are ongoing right now. And her response to me was that if the Town of Hilton Head in Beaufort County were going to engage in a level of diligence in the scope of work that included an assessment of other alternatives, that she in good faith could not submit a request to the Federal Highway Administration to have the environmental assessment, the temporary environmental assessment that's now in place converted to a finding of no significant impact, because she felt like she couldn't ask for that final determination at that level if there was a degree of diligence ongoing at the local level that would cause her to have to revise that request. I asked her, okay, so if it takes six to nine months, and I think that's the timeframe people were talking about in regard to the, six to nine months, six months to do the work, but then a period of time to issue the RFPs and to enter, enter contractual negotiations, it would be anywhere from six to nine months. I then said to her, if, if that happens, if, if there's a, a scope of work that's agreed to by the town and the county that includes this assessment of, of other alternatives, and it takes six to nine months, and that results in you waiting to ask for the FONSI, F-O-N-S-I, until that's done, what impact does this have on this project? She indicated that it could have a potential negative impact with funding partners, and, and by that she meant in regard to the $120 million state infrastructure grant that Beaufort County had obtained a couple, three years ago, whenever that was. Ashley Jacobs was the county minister at that time. I then talked to John White, who's the chairman of the State Infrastructure Bank, and I reviewed the, you know, the same thing with him, the whole, the whole process. And, and he indicated that if there was a delay in the request for a FONSI for six to nine months, that that would jeopardize the CIB funding. He didn't say it would rescind the CIB funding. He didn't say that the funding would be withdrawn, but he did say it would jeopardize it. And, and by way of emphasis, he said that the CIB is setting precedence with this money, and that when it appropriates money for grants, it sets precedence for future applicants. And so, he said that we need to be mindful down here of, of the CIB's obligation in that regard. So, I take it what's going to be passed tonight, I mean, what's being proposed tonight, is a scope of work that does not include the assessment of alternatives. That's going to meet with some resistance with the Town of Hilton Head Council. It's, it's going to be met with some resistance in the Town of Hilton Head community. I, I say that by way of information, just so that Beaufort County Council understands that that is something that, that some on council and that many residents on the island have indicated is an important part of this scope of work. So, I, I pass that along as information. One of the things that I am glad to see in this, in this agreement that's before you is an express acknowledgement that nothing in this memorandum of agreement, if adopted by the Town of Hilton Head, is either implicitly or explicitly a consent by the Town of Hilton Head to the project, that that is something that will happen further downstream sometime next year when the actual right-of-way acquisition process begins. So, so I think that's, I think that's an encouraging development as, as well, the fact that there is an ultimate backstop that the Town of, the Hilton Head has in regard to approval or not to approve. So, so that's by way of information. I mean, it's, it's, it's a matter that, that the town has expressed certain things. I mean, it's a matter that the town has expressed certain things and a desire to have included. I just wanted to point out that this did not include some of those things. What impact that has on town council's decision is, of course, for town council to decide. I will say that I have been on record, for what it's worth, for the past several months, in thinking that the scope of work ought to include an assessment of alternatives. And that was something that last April, when we had a meeting at the Hilton Head Library, and, you know, I remember coming down from session and laying this out, that everybody seemed to be in agreement with at that time, okay? I guess that's water under the bridge at this point, no pun intended. I mean, we're five and a half months downstream, and the latitude at that time that Secretary Hall said we had in regard to doing that apparently isn't benefiting us at this point in time, given where we are in September. But I will point out, there's a degree of frustration on my part, that I thought that this was something that we had all agreed to last April, but I just make that, I note that for what it's worth. I'm happy to answer any questions in regard to what I know about the NEPA process, what I know about the request for a record of decision from the Corps of Engineers, what I think about the process, what the town of Hilton Head might do or might not do. I continue to be a resource to help you two. You both kind of reached an agreement, I think there's a desire to reach an agreement. In any way I can be of use in that regard, Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKellen, you have reviewed the document?
Yeah.
There are a couple changes that we need to make.
Senator, if you would just hold there for a minute.
Sure, sure.
And help me with this, and Mr. Greenway, I want to address this to you as well. There are a great many wherethes in this, and then there's a therefore with a lot of other things. On page one, it says that there have been several comments made by residents of the town regarding the impacts to the citizens and visitors of Hilton Head, and they've requested an independent review be conducted to evaluate community impacts, to include areas that lie outside of the project limits, and that will provide design modification recommendations that will otherwise enhance the project. And all of that will be considered, according to that language, and that's good. Senator, you follow me on that?
I do, and I don't mean to say that there isn't meritorious things in the scope of work that you're attaching this memorandum of agreement.
Yeah.
I think there are a lot of good things in there. I'm just pointing out that there is one material piece that's going to give some pause to town council.
I understand. Going down to the therefor's, there is a county and town agreement to work in good faith together. In item number three, it says, "The county will procure an independent consultant." I don't think that's correct. I think it's the county and the town will procure an independent consultant. Is that correct?
The county will, because we're funding the project.
Right, well, we will be funding it, but the selection will be made in partnership. I think that language, I see what you're saying is, you're actually saying the county's going to pay for it. Is that the, okay, so then it's not necessary?
We talk about the selection process and other.
Okay, all right.
The next paragraph, actually, paragraph four.
Okay, all right. In item number four, it says, "The county and town will establish a committee," and then it says, "The following town representatives shall sit on the committee," but then they named three county positions. So actually should say that the following county representatives shall sit on the committee, and then the town representatives will be the town manager, the assistant town manager, and the town engineer. So they've just misidentified it, and it's just a scriveness error that can be simply corrected, but before it goes back over, I think we have to correct that. In item number five, says that we agree to pursue a finding of no significant impacts from the FHA concurrent with the independent review. If any findings from this review affect environmental documents submitted for the FONSI, those recommendations will be considered, and the environmental documents will be updated and resubmitted as agreed upon by the county and the town. And that's correct and should be that way. Item number nine, there is a scriveness error, the last word, and that should say municipal consent by the town will not be reasonably withheld, and it simply says "held." So I think that needs to be corrected before it goes over there tomorrow. And item number ten is that county and the town agree that the independent review will be the last and final study needed for the town to make a final decision related to this project, and that's going to stay in there as well. Okay. I don't know if anybody else has read it that way, but I'd like to find out after any comments or questions from this panel with regard to the wherethes and the therefor's in this. Because this is going to go back tomorrow, I would say. Okay. So this is our chance to ensure that the language is the way we want it to be.
Yeah, sir, it's our understanding that town of Hilton Head Island wants it back as quickly as possible, so I'll forward it back to Mr. Orlando and his staff tomorrow because they have expressed a desire to hold a special called meeting in order to take up this item.
I'm just trying to tell everyone here on council, this is our opportunity here tonight.
Right.
To address any language in here that needs to be added, or deleted, or reconstructed somehow. Tomorrow will be too late, is what I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
And I understand exactly, Mr. McKellen has recited things accurately, and there's going to be, what I think the best that can come out of tonight's meeting is to narrow down to the last piece of disagreement being this scope of work, okay? And that's going to be something that the town has to decide on. One of the pieces that the town had mentioned last Tuesday that perhaps could be taken up here is having citizen involvement, along with the three county members and the three town members involved in that selection process. And I don't know if that's something that you want to take up here, or if you want that to be something that the town considers whether it's material for them. But I did want to point out that, I mean, to the extent that we can narrow down the areas of disagreement between the town and the county, take that opportunity. So I don't know how you all feel about that, but I feel obligated to kind of point that out.
Everybody understand? Mr. Hervishon?
Thank you. I just have one question. With the committee that's going to choose the consultant, six people.
That's correct.
What are we doing if it's three-three?
It will not be that way.
Promise?
I promise. Because we have a great working relationship with town of Hilton Head Island and the staff there, so it will, we will be unanimous on the consultant that we hire.
Okay.
But I do think, Mr. Hervishon, I mean, having the citizens involved in that selection process will go a long way toward confidence in the process. And I don't know what kind of language you want to include there, or whether you simply want to, I don't have any suggestions for you all, but I did, that was something they noted at their meeting last Tuesday.
I will tell you, just as county administrator, I would recommend against the citizens committee being involved, because when the citizens get involved in this situation, we are going to be facing delays on selecting an independent consultant, so I would recommend to council, to you all as elected officials, as the county administrator, that you allow the professional staff members that you have hired, both for the county and the town of Hilton Head Island, to select the appropriate consultant on this, and trust that they will do that. If you do not like that selection as elected individuals after the fact, and there's some reason to do that, then you all can say, hey, Mr. Orlando, Mr. Greenway, why did we, why did we drop the ball on this and mess this up? You can do that after the fact.
Mr. Chairman? I'm pleased to hear that Secretary Hall had some misgivings about delaying the process. I have a lot of experience with environmental impact statements and FONSI's, and any time you delay, as long as we've already delayed, it opens the door for people to question it, and we may never get there. Again, I agree with administrator, I don't think we need town representatives, they've had input during the NEPA process, they'll continue to have input during the NEPA process, and they can express their concerns to the people who work for the town and for Beaufort County. The reason I second the motion, because I have a personal sense of urgency about this project, even though I live in northern Beaufort County, because the more we delay, the less likely the FONSI will be done, and then we'll end up starting over again.
And let me be clear, the misgivings that Secretary Hall were not in regard to the independent review and the NEPA process, it was in regard to what impact that would have on funding partners.
I understand.
In regard to the State Infrastructure Bank.
But when you open that door to delay the NEPA process, you also open the door for all other things to fall apart. That's my opinion.
No, I understand, and it's not my, it's not my role to necessarily be argumentative, but I, but I guess I'll be argumentative. I'll say that this NEPA process is going to be publicly reviewed and possibly publicly challenged. And to the extent that you do additional due diligence, okay, on the front end, in regard to assessment of things, I think you strengthen the NEPA process, and you strengthen the ability to withstand collateral challenges. I understand that's got to be balanced against other things, and those other things right here, of course, is the $120 million from the State Infrastructure Bank. I get that, and it's not my role to assess trade-offs. But I do think it's worthwhile noting that doing this independent review, if you do it, in and of itself, I think strengthens the NEPA process and strengthens any collateral attacks that may subsequently occur.
And I have seen environmental impact statements take ten years.
Sure.
And if that's what, if we keep going down this road, we won't be able to do a finding of FONSI, we'll end up doing environmental impact statement, and so be it, but that's where I come from. I hate for us to lose the money, or the money be jeopardized because of more study and more, and people had a chance for public input during the process.
So the argument then seems to be, you're afraid of getting additional information because that may jeopardize the ability to get a FONSI, which would then be the reason that you'd want the additional information.
No, I, that's not what I meant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one comment. Senator Davis, I, this is probably since I've been on council, has been before us, and to move forward with replacing of a bridge, originally, the state was going to do one bridge, and now we're doing both bridges at this time. And my comment is that in this MOU, there is no timetable. It doesn't say we need to do this by such and such a time. I think we need to really put a timeline on this so that we can make sure that we get this back in a sufficient time, because when it's all said and done, if this project moved forward, the bottom line is going to be the burden of the county as a whole to replace that bridge, and...
I think that's a good suggestion, Mr. Glover, if you wanted to put, I mean, again, the timeframe, and Mr. Greenway may have some comments on this, been thinking about six to nine months. I don't know if you feel like it's worthwhile to put some sort of constraining date on there. Perhaps that could go in the last paragraph, when you talk about, this is the last bit of due diligence that's going to be done.
I like that.
Maybe that might be an appropriate place to put in the anticipated time that it's going to take.
Yes, yes, I like that clause in there.
Yeah, I, yeah, Mr. Lawson.
You know, I will support the MOU, however, I mean, I'm, like I stated last time, I think that we need to show some urgency. My daughter asked, what's going on with this? What's happening? And so the easiest way I can explain to her was, it's like we're trying to make an ice cream sandwich. We can go ahead and make the ice cream and build the bridges, and they can make the cake anytime they want to after that, and then they can be put together later on. So that's my feeling, is that we as a council need to push forward, we need to move forward and get this taken care of, and they can make their cake anytime they want, because, again, the bridges need to be replaced, and it's not going to change from Moss Creek to Wimmo Harbor.
Mr. Hervishon?
Thank you. One of the concerns that I have, and based on what I've heard tonight and what I've heard in prior meetings, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're spending about a million dollars a week. Is that correct, the longer that this goes?
Probably, it's a couple of million a month.
The project is underfunded by about $30 million right now. That doesn't mean necessarily it's a million dollars a week. It's one step at a time. The step we're in is to move forward with the design. The sooner we get the bridge designed, the sooner we'll know actually what it's going to cost.
Okay. So with that said, and what I'm hearing is that delays may cause problems with the CIB.
Yes.
May. Is that fair?
May I be responsive, too?
Sure.
And I think it's important that we be precise. When the last estimate that was done in March by the DOT was the project was going to be $320 million. The estimate as of a few weeks ago was $328 million. So it's increased by $8 million in approximately six months. So let's be careful about what we talk about, a million dollars a week.
I just want to make sure we're getting that right.
The second thing is, and I think it's useful to talk about the dollars, because that's another piece that I'm working on with the delegation. The current cost is $328 million, that's the current updated cost. Roughly $101 million is coming from the county, the most part is that $80 million from the local option sales tax, about $72 million from the Department of Transportation that they have, they have set aside and allocated to this, and $120 million from the CIB. So using round numbers, we're about $29 million short. I've had discussions with the governor's office, this is an excellent candidate for the governor's recommendations on what to do with one-time monies that are going to be available this coming year, and Secretary Hall has indicated that, once those dollars are identified in the executive budget as being recommended by the governor to go to this, that is sufficient assurance of funding on her part to then request a record of decision from the Corps of Engineers. But that still has to be done. We got to get that $29 million, to your point, Mr. Hervishon.
Okay, thank you. So from where I'm sitting, a sense of urgency seems to be prudent, at least to some extent. So to Mr. Glover's point, I do think that we should put a timeline on this. I would like to see that get itself into the MOU. And then also, one of the things that I'm wrestling with right now is some of the criticism that I've heard specifically, and I know the rest of us have heard, is that we haven't adequately included the public in this. Now, I hear Mr. Greenway very loudly and very clearly, and I would like to see us contemplate somewhere where we can get a little bit more feedback from the public. I don't know that it's necessarily including the public in that committee, but, and I don't have the answer, I'm just posing the question, but that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Well, essentially, the way I would recommend that we handle the input from the public is, once we get the independent consultant on board, is that we allow an opportunity for people to come in and meet with those consultants about what their concerns are, and how the consultants discuss that with them, and go over the scope of work with those individuals, so that everybody's on the same page. And if there are things that the citizens have concerns about, that are things that the independent consultant is going to cover with the scope of the work that they're going to be doing, then the consultant can take those into account. So we'll make sure that that opportunity happens for the public to be able to meet with the consultant and have an opportunity to have their concerns and voice heard when the consultant first comes on board.
We're going to do that in concert with the town.
Yes, we're going to do everything in concert with the town, the town staff.
That's what I meant.
Right.
Other comments? Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, we thank Senator Davis for his leadership in all of this, and a lot of you may remember, he was very instrumental in getting the money from the CIB, and so we appreciate you very much, Senator. This came through public facilities a week ago, unanimous vote. We said at that point in time, there would probably be some changes as we talked with the town, and there were some. And the senators played a useful role in that. I think our staffs have done a great job. I know Jared and Eric have been working with their counterparts, and my sense is, there's a lot of agreement in this. As the senator mentioned, you got the input from DOT, and I think it's sorting down to a good project. Now, the review, when it takes place, it seems to me, what I'm hearing, is that the, any recommendations that come out of that can generally be folded into the process as it goes forward through the design. And if there was some gigantic change to a different alternative, we'd be back to ground zero anyway, and so it does seem to me the input from the review will be, to Kathy's point, be included in the design and permitting as we go forward. It also seems to me that there's the bridge piece, which we need to keep on track. It's the long lead, it's where the dollars are, that's where we have the exposure for inflation. What the independent review's going to do is look at everything, but it's going to be heavily, I think, in the area of the stony, and then it expands to look at a lot of things on the rest of the island. I think it's a good thing to do. I think it's a good thing to do, I think some good things will come out of it. But it can be done in parallel with what's going on on the design of the bridges, and then they can still finish at the same point rather than holding one up for the other. So I, I see there's two pieces to this agreement, basically. As the senator mentioned, you end up preserving the municipal consent for the town, that's something that they want, I think it's logical for them to have it, because a lot of it relates to what it, the gateway looks like and what the aesthetics look like, probably less so on the transportation aspects of it. But, we need to move the environmental assessment forward to request the so-called Fonzie as quick as we can, and, and I view that we may be in a little deeper hole, or at least a lot more risk, that if we don't get going. You know, when, when we looked at this in the spring and had a conversation with DOT, had, I had the impression coming out of that, that we were still okay on budget, now we're talking 30, 40 million in, in the hole. We're in a high inflationary period, and if you take those numbers and compounding effects, and you roll them into the, to the budget, and, and my way of thinking, Chris, some calculations, you know, I, I think you're north of a million dollars a week for every week that we, we hold up. So if it takes six to nine months, we may be adding another 50, 70 million to the project. Then you got the 120 that's at risk with the CIB, so we're basically playing with probably the better part of $200,000 if we don't get this done as a degree of urgency, and I believe the, as Eric said, the town wants to call a special meeting and get on with it, they recognize the urgency. So, I think it's a fair deal where they maintain the consent, we get on with the request for the Fonzie, and get on with business, the, it's, it could be a, a down spiral if, if we don't get on with it in a timely fashion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Okay, one comment from me is that, remember at the start of the meeting, I did the invocation, I had this one in mind as well. This is a tough decision. This is where we can be unified, this is where our camaraderie, camaraderie will work. Within the scope of the project, it says, we want to do things together to make this the best project, but we need to move forward as quickly as we can. I don't see the need to put a timeline on there, for this reason and this reason only. It is jointly between the town and the county to select an independent who will then receive information about the scope of work. From there, that independent agent is going to come back to that committee and say, based upon what I hear, here's the timeframe I think it's going to take. At that point in time, we'll know where we stand. So I, I think we should approve this with the minor adjustments that were made in the various areas, send it to the township for their approval so that we can do the next critical step, which is to hire that independent person to start that process. Okay. Do I need a roll call vote?
Senator Davis, can we have some more public comment? Because this is an issue like the other ones, that I...
No, you can comment, we have another citizen's comment at the end, so you can comment on what action we're going to take. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to respect your comment about the timeline, leaving it up to the independent agent to do so, but they must give us something so that everybody will understand.
Oh, absolutely.
That this is, will, this is what we have to do, and this is our marching order.
Absolutely, that's an unknown at this point in time, because we really don't know what that scope of work is going to be, based upon the input from the county, from the town, and the citizens.
Well, we know what, we, we know what the projected scope of work's going to be, we just don't know at this point, until we talk to the consultant, how long it's going to take them to do it. It's going to be somewhere between six and nine months, but we can write that into their contract, that they will have, they will have X number of months in order to do this.
Yeah, if they, if they come back with an extended period of time, we may have to give them a drop everything order, but then the price is going to go up.
Yes.
But if that's the case, then that's what we have to pay, because we have to get that back.
That's right.
In that six to nine month, if they say, well, it would normally take 18 months, well, move it to the top of the ballot.
And that, and that's, that's, the, the council, you all, you know, I think you appreciate, if we leave it in the hands of the professional staff, it's going to get done much quicker than if we...
Don't get an argument there.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, do I need to pass this unanimously or a roll call?
May I just ask?
Unanimous consent, sir.
On every other agenda item, there was an opportunity for public comment.
Because we had public hearings for them. Right.
And is there an opportunity to express concern to this council?
At the end of the...
Right, after, after we take our action.
After we vote.
Yes, yeah.
What about comments on your draft? You know, positive comments, not criticism, to pick up such a comment that...
Once we, we voted, we'll, we'll hear you out, but we're ready to vote.
Not being difficult, but you're, you're, you're being asked to vote on something that is, is imprecise, is inaccurate.
Well, no, we made the changes that we're going to make.
I pointed out the scriven as errors, they'll correct those.
Well, I've got some other scriven errors. You know, I read it supply, I've been through it, it just seems, you know, just, just trying to help the, the, the carving of the document, not, not to stop it or reject it, just to help carve it.
Well, at the end, you can make the comments, and then if they're appropriate, they'll incorporate them, if they're appropriate, but they'll have to make that decision. We're not going to take an action on your comments.
They, they just have...
We're not going to vote on your comments, whether you like it or not, we're not going to, but we're going to let you make those comments if you'd like to at the end of the meeting.
No, I'm not asking you to, to, to vote on my comment, I'm asking if I have to point out some scriven as errors.
Yes, you can, at the end of the meeting. I know you want to do it your way. See that we're going to follow, and that's the policy, and I'm sorry you don't agree with it, but that's the way we're going to do it.
I have said...
So then we don't have to talk about it anymore.
I have said this.
Call the question, Mr. Chairman. All right. Do we need to do a roll call vote, or can this be done by acclamation? This will be passed?
Take the roll call.
This will be passed unanimously without objection, and I see no objections. Okay, item 26 is approval of recommended changes to the Beaufort County Code, County Procurement Code, Division Four, Section 2-509, authority and duties of the purchasing director and chief financial officer. A motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dawson makes the motion, a second, please.
A second.
Ms. Howard. Duly motioned and second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Our last item is approval of a payment of $186,840.38 to a group of retirees, as we now know it, retired from July 1, 2016, to July 1, 2020, for loss of poet, 21, for loss of post-retirement health benefits. Motion, please?
So, so moved.
Mr. McCullen? And Mr. Glover. Duly motioned and second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this...
I'm going to object to this.
Okay, there is one objection, any other objections? Seeing that, this will be approved with 10 yes, and Mr. Lawson will be the objection. Now, we're at citizen comments on what we have just done, so please come forward, make your statements as you wish. Yes, sir?
Hi, Grace Smith, a Hilton Head Island resident, imagine that. So a couple of things, spontaneous, not my previous prepared remarks, but the first thing I want to address is Mr. Greenway's comment about not wanting to have citizens on the selection committee. I just want to point out and make aware to all of you that the initial SOW, and the initial MOU or MOA, or whatever you want to call it, were actually authored by a small group of citizens of Hilton Head Island, and then submitted to town council, and submitted to Senator Davis. So, it was originated by the residents, what, what the basis was formed for the SOW and the MOU that, that was at least originally proposed, and I think still forms a considerable basis, so I wanted to point that out. Okay, second, I'm really glad that I came here prior to just line item 25, because I felt really good about you guys being so strongly in support of the penny tax and preserving the environment of this beautiful area, and I, I thought that was terrific. But then, I got to thinking, and people have told me that's always a dangerous thing for me, but I couldn't help to see the juxtaposition between, you know, the concern for the environment of this area, and then the fact that you guys are so hell-bent on building this monstrosity unibridge as the entrance to what is considered to be one of the most environmentally sensitive and beautiful islands of the entire east coast. The two just don't line up, and I can't see the reason for the, this push to get this bridge thing started, and oh yes, it's going to be an 11-lane unibridge, before we get the recommendations back from the independent consultant. So that's the second thing. And then the third thing was, I took note of Councilman Lawson's comments about, he was very happy that this $100 million project, which is a great project, is being put to a referendum. And then I got to thinking again, I was thinking, well, hell, this project that we're talking about with the 278 corridor, that's a, that's a third to a half a billion dollar project. So, who knows, maybe that should be also a prospect for a referendum for the citizens, because I'll tell you, there's probably a great majority of 40,000 Hilton Head residents that would not be too much in favor of, you know, the, the current bridge proposal that you folks are, are, you know, really look like you're, you're totally wanting to, to push along here. So those were my comments, and I thank you for the opportunity to make them. Have a good night.
Anyone else?
First of all, my name's Tamara Becker, and I'm from Hilton Head, and I'm standing before you as a citizen and not a member of town council, but I do find it amazing the lack of respect given, not to me, but the lack of respect given to 10,000 signatures of residents of this county, mostly, if not all, on Hilton Head, who object to the manner in which you're performing your duties towards Hilton Head Island. I understand that you have a sense of urgency, I've also heard to the clarifications that Senator Davis has brought forward to you, and I hear a lot of maybes, and I hear about an extension of concern about $120,000, but mostly what I hear about is a delay in time, we've known this for a while, right? But I hear about a delay in time over and over and over again, not coming from Hilton Head's side, not coming from Hilton Head's side, we're asking for a manner of respect to be given to our residents and to our wishes, because the impacts of this bridge rely on our shoulders. And so I'm asking for you to not only consider that the professionals are involved, but that the people who live in the area that your bridge is going to impact mostly are involved. The citizens of Hilton Head have a responsibility to themselves, and you have a responsibility to them, and I have a responsibility to all of you, to do my best to bring this together. And I'm asking you, as county council members, to first consider our residents, place at least one, if not two, it's kind of like the old, I guess it's a joke now, so I'll use it, Pelosi, you have to pass it so you know what's in it, we have to hire so we can talk to them about what we want them to do, same sort of thing, maybe. It's disrespectful what you have projected today towards the residents of Hilton Head, and frankly, to the residents of Beaufort County. I'm asking you to listen to when this comes back to you, because it sure as heck will. I really am not going to say anything more, but I am disappointed by the way this county council acted this evening. I request that you put our citizens first, and you do it the next time we meet again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Move for Chairman.
So it's your way of the highway, huh?
Yeah. All right, no further action, this meeting is adjourned.